Hello, world.
All right, you guys should be popping up any second.
Yeah.
All right, and we are going to add record record to the cloud. We are live and we are live, both directions. And of course, I am not even closely prepared. All right, now I am. I just gotta pull up the agenda. This is a special council meeting to pass the 2021 budget, operating budget, whatever it is for Franklin County. Kim, you're more than welcome to say exactly what we're here doing. But we're also, we're also reading through all of the rest of the legislation to get another reading in since we're already here. So there's actually quite a bit. Okay, so let's do roll call real quick.
Hi Diane.
I was hoping I had them. All right, here we go. Roll call, Councilman Bruegger.
Here.
Councilman Benedetti.
Here.
Council President Trump.
Diane, you're on mute.
Yeah, here, here, here.
Councilman Wolf.
Here. Muted.
Councilman Curl.
Here.
Councilman McNamara.
Present.
All right. All right, and then we are moving straight to legislation. And this, of course, is gonna start, I'm gonna turn this over to Mark, but the first one is gonna be the natural area that was tabled. I think we need to take it off the table and you guys will figure all that out.
Okay.
Been through the first and second reading on this, I think.
Yes.
Since that is the, because yes, we had already been through the first and second. And it has been untabled, we then proceed to just the third reading then and can pass it this evening, is that correct?
You have, you have to make a motion to untable it, and then it can go through a third reading for passage.
Awesome.
A third reading and then a motion to pass.
All right. Joe, would you like the honors of motioning to untable, or do I have to do that?
Yes, I present a motion to untable the lake resolution.
Awesome, I will second.
Those in favor?
It's not a, it's not a roll call, right? It's just a
That could just be a voice vote.
In that case, all in favor of
I.
I. I.
I, all those opposed, same sign. All right, in that case, third reading of Resolution 2020-02, going all the way back to January for the second resolution of the year. There's a resolution declaring our commitment to a clean, natural area, providing beauty, tranquility, and recreation for residents and supporting a community of native trees, plants, and aquatic life. I will say the biggest sort of takeaway on this is that it does allow, it authorizes council to form a lake commission or committee if they want to, to put in place for a plan of attack for long-term lake project. Of course, we've already been sort of working on those plans, but this would allow us to make a subcommittee if we wanted to, but does not require us to. And I move its passage since we have finished up the third reading.
Discussion.
Anyone's got anything to say about it?
Yeah, I do.
All right. You have Councilperson Benedetti.
Well, I'm, I don't remember exactly why this got tabled and, you know, when, when it was tabled, I was under the impression that we were, or there were some revisions that need to be made, and I don't see anything different other than what we originally proposed, what was proposed and then tabled, because my problem is the, the language in the proclamation is, you know, factually incorrect. In talking about the, the lakes being named after, or the village being named after the lakes, that's not the case. You know, I know it may sound like nitpicking, but that the proclamation itself is something that I don't like the, the language in it. And so I'm not sure what we were talking about, you know, why it was tabled, but I'm not, I'm not comfortable in passing it the way it's written. And I'm not, you know, like has been mentioned, I realize that there's no requirement to have, put a committee together, but it kind of looks like that's what we're supposed to do in this piece of legislation. You know, so I'm trying to figure out what the purpose of this is, on top of the fact that it's factually incorrect and that the village isn't named after the lakes.
Yeah, I'm seeing that where it's written now.
Now, the, the village was named after the park, and the park was created with the lakes, so I
The owner's wife was named Minerva. If you want to go know exactly why the villa, why it's called Minerva Park, it's because it was named after a park, it has nothing to do with the lakes.
You know, the park was a water park, county, but I, you know, I guess we're I know. Semantics.
Well, and, and the other parts about having the law director, our counselor, and our planner approving what, I mean, it's just the whole thing, I just
This goes back to last July, at the time it was first read, prior to reading, first reading when it was a proclamation, they did agree with it. Eric agreed, Jean agreed, everybody agreed at the time.
So Tony, are your concerns in the resolution itself or in the proclamation that is in the attachment?
The proclamations of, of the biggest concern is the
Yeah, so, so the proclamation is just there as historical context for how Joe initially raised this to the, to the council, right? What we are actually voting on is the language of the Resolution 2020-02, right? And so, you know, you, you have voiced your concern that it authorizes the council to create a committee, but beyond that, in the language of the resolution itself, do you actually have a concern?
Well, I, I don't underst, well, I, the way I read it is that we were required to put together a committee, we're
No, it says, section one, council is hereby authorized to form a lake commission slash committee, the committee to put in place a plan of attack for this long-term project. So it doesn't say the council shall, must, will, it says is authorized to.
Well, you know, I guess what I would like to see is just take that proclamation out of it. Not
By passing this, we're also approving the proclamation, are we?
All right, I don't know, it's
It's, it's fine by me.
Was an attachment from a year ago.
Yeah, it's fine, it's fine by me if we wanna, a, a pro, you know, vote on it with the proclamation stricken as an attachment, that's not gonna break my heart. I mean, I guess it's Joe, Joe is the one who raised it, Joe is the one who tabled it last time, and Joe is the one who untabled it this time, so.
If it's a Joe, would you be okay with passing it with the proclamation as just being an attachment and not a formal part of this, I guess, is what we're saying?
It is attachment, the question is, is it okay if we just strike it as an attachment?
Joe, would you be okay with that?
Well, I would, it's, you know, it's a generic proclamation, it doesn't mandate or require or ask for anything, it just kind of states some stuff about, you know, the water park, be a Minerva Park, and that's what our name was and where it started, and I didn't mean to offend anybody with that.
It's inaccurate.
So, so then I would move that we strike the attachment and, yeah, that, that's, that's the motion, to strike the attachment.
All right, motion on the floor to strike the attachment, any second?
Second.
All right, seconded, all those in favor of striking the attachment, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, please say no.
Aye.
Okay. The ayes have it. Appreciate you trying to fight for your language there. All right, now back to the main motion. Passing Resolution 2020-02 minus the attachment, any discussion on that? Okay, I had enough time to take a sip of water and no one spoke up, so I think we will go to a vote, please. If our roll caller could call the roll.
Council President Trump. Councilman Bruegger.
Aye.
Councilman Wolf.
Aye.
Councilman Curl.
Aye.
Councilman McNamara.
Present.
That's an aye.
Yeah, it's an a or an a, a present would be like an abstain there.
Yeah.
Well, in that case, in that case, in that case, aye.
Councilman Ben and Teddy.
Aye.
All right, we're good.
Okay, our next item on the agenda is the approval of the Franklin County 2020 tax budget. This was just discussed in our open tax budget committee meeting. I don't know if Leo wants to give another little 30-second spiel on it in case we have different viewers out there or not.
I also want to see if there's any new comments, hang on.
All right, well, then I will
10 seconds.
You know, stretch this out.
Oh, wrong one.
And I was, has not jumped up to say she wants to talk, and that is fine. This is a, like, sort of a formality from the county, them telling us, us giving them that this is not the actual, like, hey, let's plan next year's budget and allocate money, as I understand it, that's gonna happen much later in the year, and be a much more detailed and involved process.
I had one thing, just in case there's anybody else watching.
Saying things. Go ahead, Kim.
And I just want to point out, for anybody that wasn't watching before, that this tax budget, the county does not let you include any levies that are expiring but on the ballot. So our four mil levy that is going to be on the ballot in November is not included in this, so when you say it's not the, the budget for next year, it's really not, because even to start with, it's about $150,000 less.
And what we
Because we're hoping that levy can
Thank you very much for that, Kim, I had totally forgotten that. Okay, Mayor Hughes, are we looking on anyone commenting?
Nope, we're good.
We're good, okay, then I move that we pass the, or accept, I guess it'd be accept the financial officer 2020 tax budget.
Is this, is this the third reading? I didn't, I
Yes.
Okay, just making sure. So I'll second.
All right, let's call it out. And I will scroll to the next one. So many pages of financials.
And, sorry, first.
That's quite all right.
Councilman Benedetti.
Aye.
Councilman Wolf.
Aye.
Councilman McNamara.
Aye.
Councilman Curl.
Aye.
Council President Trump.
Aye.
And Councilman Bruegger.
I, and I will also note that this is Resolution 2020-15, sorry, the actual resolution was after all the financial stuff, and I had not scrolled down far enough.
All right, and that is now passed. Next. Sorry, got lost.
That's quite all right. I believe this would be the second reading of Resolution 2020-17, Resolutions Proceed with the placing the issue on the ballot for a renewal tax levy for purposes of providing for the current expenses of the village and Minerva Park. Excuse me, this is what Kim was talking about, it is the four mil levy, it is one of two levies that are set to expire. Council decided not to pursue both of them, but this one. And it's a, looks like is a continuation of a period of five years would be the timeframe for it, if adopted. Not adopted, if it passes on the ballot, because this is just putting it on the ballot, let me be clear on that. And that is a second reading. Next, we have Resolution 2020-20.
No.
No.
We skipped one, 2020-16, 2020-16 and 2020-17 are both four-point mil ballot ones, there's two different ones.
Okay.
It's missing from that.
Yeah, 16 is missing.
Sorry.
That's okay, but I did skip by 2020-17 as well.
Well, you said when you just did that, didn't you?
Yeah, you just did 17, so 2020-16 is the necessity of the four mil replacement, second reading.
Okay, I do not have that one in front of me.
Right.
It's It's the second reading.
It's the second reading, let me see if I scroll down, if it's just out of order. It's not, but
No, it's not there.
Okay. 2020-16, which is a resolution stating the necessity of why we should be putting this on the ballot and our needs, so that is a second reading. Does that work?
Yeah.
It does. Worst case, it's in the, it's in the, I'll make sure it gets updated to the packet. It's in the packet from last week.
Awesome.
In my packet.
That was tax budget, that was 17, so does that mean I am jumping down, my next one should be 2020-20?
Yep.
It is.
2020-20, a resolution confirming the mayor's appointment of Seth Peeny Pyney, help me out there, Pyney? Penny? As a full, Penny, thank you, as a full-time police officer for the village of Minerva Park, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
We weren't gonna put that in there.
It's It's his first reading.
Yeah.
As a first reading.
Yep, and we'll take out the emergency on that, because we determined the last time, trying not to pass things as an emergency, he's already started, we're good to go. But I think council didn't want to pass any of them as emergencies, because it's just a formality.
Well, Officer Penny has been hired and approved by administration and Chief Delp, and now the village just has to make it official.
Yep.
So here's our first reading to make it official.
Perfect.
Okay, I, I have a question.
Certainly, sorry.
For the mayor, I didn't know we had a vacancy.
Sarah actually gave her two weeks. Sarah's last day was last week.
That's too bad.
Yes.
If, um
I think
Oh, I'm sorry, Diane.
I think it, okay, it would be nice to hear about it before the resolution comes out, but that's, that's, I'll remember to ask every month in our
I do actually believe that Chief mentioned it in one of his last, just as an FYI, because I remember hearing it in a council meeting. So Chief actually did announce that, one of the last ones he was at, that she was leaving, so, but she's le, yeah, she left, her last day was last Friday. We interviewed two people, we all agreed on Seth, and I mean, you know, Chief can elaborate to that and if he decides to, but I think it'll be a it, it'll be wonderful, so, but he has already started, he's been there for the last, I saw him today, I've actually seen him twice, so I'm not sure what day he officially, actually I do. It would have been the eighth, so that was his first day, we swore him in, he got his uniforms, he started working on that day.
Well, I'm a little confused right now, because are we, this, the Seth is the person we're talking about?
Yes.
This is just a hiring, don't we, do we have to come back and then finally approve him being hired in six
Yeah, that's the, that's after the probationary period is up.
After probation.
Yep, so there's two, two
This is, this is, and this is the first reading for just initially hiring him.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, he'll be on a six-month probationary period.
If I, if I may get just a confirmation verbally from Chief Delp, there have been no issues, he's a solid dude, and there's no reason we shouldn't proceed. I just haven't met the gentleman yet, like I met some of the
So he, he went through a background check, everything came back clean, he is a young guy, 21 years old, he was part-time at Mifflin Township, and was working as a dispatcher in Moro County, and is looking to start his law enforcement career. I think he's gonna be a good addition. When you get him young like that, sometimes, they can go either way, but I think this guy, he's a military guy and is gonna be easy to mold into a good op, good officer.
Excellent, I, I just hadn't had the chance to meet him like I have a few of your other officers, that's all I wanted to hear from you.
Well, he's working midnights, so if you're ever out at around 2:00 AM, you could just go find one of the officers and I'll probably be in a car with them.
Well, if I have a night off sometime, when I'm still on my work schedule, I'll have to go walk in around the neighborhood a minute.
And then just as an FYI, and just if anybody wants to know or care, Sarah just went to Powell, so there was no issues, no problems, anything, in case anybody is questioning that, she went to Powell.
Well, yeah, we knew that, that she was young and she was ambitious and wanted, was, at some point would want to move on.
I think that's something we're just gonna have to deal with.
Yeah.
Or, yeah. There's, there's bigger ponds to go play in if people get the desire to go play.
Glad to get him for a couple of years.
Yeah, yeah. All right.
Okay, on to issue 2020-21. A resolution establishing June 1st as a day of celebration of the diversity, inclusivity, and spirit of community within the village of Minerva Park, Ohio. As this is not a very long resolution, as, and as at legislative committee, there were people concerned with the village knowing exactly what this is, if no one objects, I will read the full body of it. Okay, whereas the village of Minerva Park, Ohio is a village composed of persons hailing from many different backgrounds, and whereas the village of Minerva Park, Ohio, is a village that takes pride in the members of its community, regardless of their race, national origin, religion, gender, identity, or sexuality. Now therefore be it, resolve that the village of Minerva Park, Ohio establishes June 1st to debate, to be a day of celebration of the diversity, inclusivity, and spirit of community within the village of Minerva Park. Be it further resolved that the village of Minerva Park, Ohio encourages its residents to take time on this day to get to know their neighbors and truly hear their stories and experiences in a, in order to grow into an ever closer community.
We take a second to, because I haven't had a chance to, and I love what I hear there in that proclamation, but I like, if we could put another whereas in there to talk about the village, you know, I don't know how exactly to put this, is that we will, you know, in our daily operations or, you know, in the way in which we govern the, the village, we will consider these, you know, the diversity of the people in our community, I mean, this, to me, I just like to see one more thing in there about, you know, our commitment as a village to, I don't know, recognizing the diversity of our community, because this is just to establish a day.
So you're, oh, Diane's raising her hand.
Go ahead, Diane.
I'm trying, yeah, I think that helps, so we don't talk over each other, but I just wanted to say this resolution is to establish June 1st as a day of celebration of diversity, so that's the topic, it's not about how we operate as a village. And, and that's one of the things that I mentioned, is I am sure that we, in our HR manual, everybody has the diversity language in there these days in terms of hiring practices and the like, but we could add to, we could add to our, I don't know what it's called in the village operations manual, we could add language in there about how the village does exactly what Tony is saying, but it should be, it should be the village administration's manual or employee handbook that has that kind of statement in it, and not, not this.
I would have to agree.
Yeah, I would, I would tend to agree with that, of course, anyone watching the news today knows the Supreme Court already made some more leg, headway into ensuring protections for people today.
Right.
Well, it's just a first reading, so we're not doing any action on it right now, anyone else with any comments or concerns? I'm still seeing Diane waving her hand.
One more, I, you know, you know, I have, I, I still think this is a superfluous, but nevertheless, I was looking at it, and then it says establishing June on as day of celebration, and I was looking at, just for an example, Pride Month, and of course, June 1 could be a day of the week, and perhaps we want to change that to the first Saturday in June, or the first Sunday in June, to make it a weekend, to make it more likely to happen.
That is not a bad suggestion at all, actually.
That's not, yeah, not at all.
Well, talk on that.
To commemorate the first, the first big demonstrations that we had, but yeah, if we could get it amended to be the first Saturday in June, that would be more than appropriate. I also want to thank Tony for the input he had as well, I think that'd be something really good that we could look at in our administrative code to make sure that it is on the level for people of all, all varieties.
Okay, well, I'm not sure how to proceed here as our first reading, since this is our first reading, and it looks like some people wanted to maybe change some things like the June 1st. Do we have to have a meeting to make that change? Can we say we want to make that change here at the first meeting and have it appear differently at the second? Yeah, I'll let someone tell me what to do.
It's not some substantive, it's whoever is, is controlling this document at this time just needs to make those changes, and we can read it with those changes at our next meeting.
Would that be myself or the chair of the legislative committee?
Doesn't really matter to me, Mark, you have the, you have the word document, can you make those changes?
Um I don't believe I have editing control over that.
I think the last strike was actually, the last change was actually done by the administration who took out the, so
Yeah, and I, just the way I generally have looked at legislation, it sounds like most of us are in agreement that moving it to Saturday, the first Saturday of June would be a good thing, I'm seeing everyone shaking their head. Councilman McNamara, whose resolution this was, is shaking his head, so I would ask that whoever is listening to this later, who's on admin, who made the changes before, change it from June 1st to the first Saturday of June. Everyone agree with that? Anyone want to comment or disagree? Pointing at all your little pictures, okay, moving on, that was our first reading of that, and our first amendment of it. All right, 2020-22, I'm not seeing a title on this.
This was actually done, there wasn't a title on the, am I muted? Okay, there wasn't a title on the last one, they actually redid it the exact same way, and it's because of how, I'm assuming it's because of how the CARES Act wants it, if you read it, it's actually different. So we actually passed this, this exact same document with the exception of, um, the, there was some number changes, some, hang on, I, I don't want to just ah, da, 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 da.
Well, she's looking at, that means this is that CARES Act that we passed as an emergency.
Yes.
We can get our finger on that CARES Act federal money.
Yes, so late Friday, the Ohio passed legislation that folded the CARES Act fund into another piece of legislation, which resulted in a renumbering. So it was apparently House Bill 481, and it was SB 310, whatever, we changed, unfortunately, that means we need to pass the new resol, the new attached resolution. The only difference is that he has added the appropriate reference to House Bill 481. So this is the exact same thing, just with 481 instead of 310. And we would like it waived, and this is again, like, Mark is saying, this is to get money, we're not trying to get rid of money. So this is, hopefully you guys will waive the readings, pass it as an emergency, so we can get the resolution sent out immediately.
Okay, I feel like Mayor Hughes has run a great job of summarizing what it is, so I'm not gonna go back and re-say her words, is that goofy? I move that we waive the readings of this Resolution 2020-22.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded, I think this is the one we can just do a voice vote, correct?
Readings as we call.
All right, well then, we'll call that roll.
Councilman McNamara.
Aye.
Councilman Bruegger.
Aye.
Councilman Curl.
Aye.
Councilman Ben and Teddy.
Aye.
Hi.
Council President Trump.
Hi.
And Councilman Wolf.
Hi.
Perfect.
All right, we have waived the reading. I now move for passage as an emergency. Take effect immediately, seconded by councilperson Wolf. Roll that call.
Isn't it call that roll?
Yes, but I have to say it a lot, so I get bored and shake it up a bit.
All right.
We'll get you to Mark's humor.
Sorry, I have a barking dog. Okay, so Councilman Wolf.
Hi.
Council President Trump.
Hi.
Councilman Ben and Duddy.
Hi.
Councilman Curl.
Hi.
Councilman Bruger.
Hi.
Councilman McNamara.
Hi.
All right. And as I scroll down, I'm at the bottom of my scroll, so I think that is all of our legislation for this evening.
Right, new business.
New business.
Speak now or?
Are we going into a work session after this?
Yeah, how about old business? Anybody with old business?
The lake clean.
Go ahead.
The lake cleaning up, great. There's our old business.
Throw out the dumpster, baby.
So the dumpster is being picked up tomorrow. It's full. Hal, Paul and Brian finished filling it up today and it will be removed tomorrow and assuming that council wants to move forward, which is something for you guys to discuss, we can have another dumpster delivered with the lake being lowered if people want to continue to throw things in this week and have another lake cleanup on Saturday, putting out some signs, doing some things a little bit more since it did pour down rain. That's left up to you guys. I don't know if you guys want to talk about it now or if you guys want to talk about it in six minutes when we adjourn this and move to work session.
Come on, kids, let's go down to the dumpster and throw things in.
It's nice. It's drying up. Let's do it.
Well, we had a pretty good turnout considering it was raining, you know, because
Yeah.
I would have looked out the window and said, heck, no, I'm not going.
Well, there were a few that did that.
Yeah, there was significant Facebook activity that didn't, didn't materialize, but I can't blame them. It was kind of nasty out.
And after about an hour and 45 minutes, when my little raincoat was starting to soak through, I said, well, that's enough for me. That rain.
Agreed.
Off and on.
Do you guys want to make the decision now to do it? If somebody wants to help me do anything or just tell me and I'll do it, I can put together. I have some of the little signs that like the coffee with council or like the wine and cheese. I have a few of those signs. I can kind of cover them up and do late cleanup if somebody wants to come help or again, I can do them. Put those out for the Saturday.
There used to be late cleanup signs. There used to be late, late cleanup signs specifically. I don't know.
They're gone.
Are they?
Unless somebody's got them in their garage.
I still have some from various other MPCA things and a giant thick roll of light duct tape, so I could even make some.
And I, and I could, I've got some leftover signs. I could make some signs Tiffany, so you don't have to.
Well, if we all pitch in, we can all do just a couple and.
Yeah. Is it gonna be the same Saturday, this Saturday from 8 till 12?
Can we make it at 9? That was early.
We can make it from that. I'm, I'm fine with that. So that's Saturday, the 20th.
Okay, I'm being a baby. I'm, I'm not, I'm only half kidding. I mean, that's up to you guys.
It's unlikely.
Well, this is Saturday. Some people, you know, don't like.
Saturday, 9 to 12. If someone wants to get, well, no, they get their earlier stuff, it's not going to be out, but there'll still be a dumpster there.
Well, I mean, the problem is, is then I have to get there at like 7:30 in the morning. So this, I'll be there by 8:30. 8:30 would be ideal. I'll be out there setting up stuff. I'm sure Tony will be there at 8:30. So whoever wants to show up, 8:30, but I'll do it from 9 until noon. There will be muffins. There will be water. There will be the basics. We can start advertising it on Facebook. I think if we take turns doing it, it doesn't just come from me. Obviously, we're not going to have a newsletter to put it out in, obviously, meeting at the community building. I'm going to try to get the dumpster in a little bit of a different location, a little further down. So, but there is, there's, there's enough, we could literally do this for the next five weeks, which I'm not doing, but we could literally do this the next five weeks and fill up dumpsters every single time, so.
Yes, so anyone who's listening, I know last week's dumpster and this week's dumpster should also be covered. How many dumpsters do we get a year?
So honestly, I believe the answer is, Brian, here's your answer, two twice a year. So we've already done one. So my option is I can request two for this one and just see what happens. I mean, how ambitious do you guys want to be? Or I just get one and we don't get the other ones because it's two twice a year. We did one once a year and now we have, you know, we could ask for two. I'm not promising that he's going to do it last minute, but he did tell me he would definitely have one. I can ask for two.
Four dumpsters, it's two by two.
Twice a year.
Okay.
So again, that's up to you guys. I can ask.
I would just get one.
I would just get one.
Perfect. But moving forward, we'll talk about it. Well, I guess maybe I'll just say it. We had two two trash bids, one leaf bid or no leaf bid, sorry, two trash bids, no leaf bids. We'll have a streets meeting, Tony, in the next day or two or three or four or whatever. We need to present it to council on Monday and do a recommendation. So in order to start the readings and have that done before with the 30 days, so we have to have legislation ready to go by Thursday. So I don't know if you want to have a meeting and actually I could probably do it Friday morning.
But that first reading just.
Just do a basic. Right, okay. I'll have it ready for Monday, but we need to have a streets meeting to pick which or recommend which one to council. So as soon as we can get that scheduled, just to get it done, even if it's a 15-minute streets meeting and not a full-fledged whatever. So we can talk about that.
I'm going to turn in the bid for the leads and get it. Take care of both of them.
I would too. So if we can get somebody to do that in the next day or two. So anyways, that's that. You and I will talk about that after a while. But yeah, if we could do Thursday, I think we already have a communication Thursday. If we could just do it 15 minutes after that, I mean, it's literally going to take 15 minutes. You're going to look at both of them and it's pretty straightforward.
Could you send the email out the trash proposals or?
Did the two that we got?
Yeah.
Eh, they're in binders and they're like 26 pages. Yeah.
I'm just looking at a cost.
I could, yeah, I'll photocopy those two and send it to you because that's pretty, that is pretty straightforward. That's two pages.
Yeah.
So I'll, I'll give you what the bid was for and then what their pricing is. But yeah, I mean, in the bid packets, they send all kinds of like
Yeah.
referrals and, you know, all that kind of stuff.
Is there another, there another Zoom to the work session? Are we just going to transition in?
No, we're gonna, we're gonna adjourn here and as soon as you guys are ready.
Okay, cool, because I didn't, I don't think I had another Zoom like.
No, my computer locks up when I do it. So who wants to adjourn this? Let people get off here.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Driver.
Bye.
Bye.
Post extensions, anybody, anybody. Okay, let's get off here. Anybody or not get off here. Anybody that doesn't want to stay for the work session, go for it. Other than that, if I log out, I'll log back in on my other one. Because sometimes it does that when people kick off. As soon as they kick off, it locks me up. So who wants to start with the topic that you guys want to and then maybe we can move back to any of the other stuff that you guys want, the planning of?
I think Diane had emailed out quite a few topics she wanted to look at for this, so I don't know if we want to let her start, start with that.
Well, we can. Someone stopped me. So one of the requested topics was on meeting management and so underneath there, I just put out some ideas or thoughts of my own or up for discussion. But we, we have been, I know this is controversial with people who don't, you know, once they get on, once they get on a roll, they want to continue talking and that sort of thing. So it's a touchy subject in terms of trying to manage a meeting. But we do get into situations like we did in the last council meeting where we get into the weeds so far, we might as well have it. We might as well be having a committee meeting and, and if we could all have more sensitivity or about that and be able to pull us out of it so that we can then move it back to committee or if it's, if it needs to be talked about by everybody, then schedule it, schedule it when we have more time. So I mean, some of the thoughts that, that came up were getting consensus. First of all, we need to get consensus from everybody in council that they want, they want to honor the length of meetings for council and committee. And I think that Tiffany's mantra has been, Mayor Tiffany's mantra has been, you know, two hours for, well, trying to get each meeting to an hour. I don't know that that's possible, but at least a committee meetings for an hour, council for no more than two hours. And then whoever is running, whoever is the committee chair or the person that's running the meeting, if they could do, do a little better, because sometimes we get so absorbed in talking or listening that we don't look at our watches, but trying to keep track, better track of the time and then declaring when there's only 10 minutes left or 15 minutes left in the meeting and, and just being more cognizant of time. So committee chairman monitoring the meeting time. And if, if, if everybody wants to go over because they're just so anxious to discuss something further, then, then, then it needs to be a agreement that to go over and how much you want to go over.
Well, I like, I, I like to talk about who, who decided that the meetings are an hour long. I mean, that's where I'm, I, I like to bring up the fact that, you know, what was in council's mind when we increased the pay for council members is that it was to start to get a little bit more out of the council member. So I don't know where the hour, where, well, I'm, I don't know when a time limit at all for a meeting, you know, where that comes from.
Okay, we have, we have hands up for Brian and then Mayor Tiffany, Mayor Hughes.
Mayor Hughes had her hands up. You had your hand up first.
Mine's simple. My only thing is for actual council meetings, when I, when we start talking about work sessions and we start talking about committee meetings, that's where the brunt of everything needs to be. So like this is a work session. I feel like there shouldn't be a time limit on a work session or a committee meeting, because if we were doing what we needed to do in those particular meetings, our council meetings in which we're paying Gene Holland, Eric, our engineer, when he does come, Leah, Becky, anytime we bring them into meetings, we need to be cautious of how long we're talking in actual council meetings. So to me, yes, a council meeting should be, there are times in which, don't get me wrong, old business, new business is going to create some stuff. Or Mike Lickinger, we invite him in once a quarter or whatever, and he talks for two hours by himself. I'm sorry, Mike, I know you're probably going to listen to this. So when we have different things like that, I feel like there is an exception to it, but for the most part, I feel like the actual council meeting, we need to respect their time and ours. I mean, I also don't want to sit in a communication committee meeting or a safety meeting for two and a half hours talking about absolutely nothing. As you guys are aware, I try to attend every single one of them because I, because I like to know what's going on and most of you guys do too. So yeah, I want it to be productive. I don't want to just talk in circles, but moral of the story, council meetings are for business and everything else should be in the committee meetings, but I, I would truly say I don't feel like a lot of this stuff is getting resolved in. But I also blame it on Zoom. I know I'm one of only, you know, not everybody agrees with me, but I don't feel like, I feel like once we get back to back into regular meetings, I feel like a little bit more would get done, but I get where Tony's going with this. I'm going to let Brian talk for a second, but I do also know where Tony's going with what he's, what his point to it is.
So I was the one who had raised this as a work session topic with Diane. And the reason why is that I don't believe that we all are operating under the same assumptions of what each section of the agenda is for. Right? So for example, when we are in committee reports, right, we get some reports and in my opinion, a report is, this is what we did last month. This is our next month's meeting date. Right? That's, that's a report. Everything else is hope, dreams and wishes. Right? And we got a couple that were, this is what we did last month. This is our next meeting date. But then we got a couple that were, well, we didn't have a meeting, but what I'd like to talk about is, and then we talked about that and became an open discussion for 15 minutes. Right? And then we had another one that, you know, there was no discussion of what happened in the previous meeting and we talked about what the committee could take up for 20, 25 minutes. Right? Those two are not reports. Those two are basically committee meetings happening in the middle of a business work session or business session. So what I was hoping in this is to come to an agreement on what a committee report is so that we can shape that section of our business meeting in a way that we all agree makes sense. Similarly, I think we have a, a, a problem in how we use old business, new business. Right? If it's old business, right, it should be either a request for an update on a piece of old business like, so we currently have the storm sewer stuff in flight and if by some reason that wasn't in a committee report, it would be perfectly appropriate for someone to chime up in old business. Hey, we didn't hear anything about this project. What's the, what's the HAPs on, on this project, right? That's an old business item. Or even I could say, you know, you know, as a, as a committee member of the communications committee, if it didn't come up in the, in the committee report, I could say, oh yeah, and by the way, I got an estimate for the blast service, text blast service, and I emailed it to the other people in the committee. Just so you know, we're, we're on that, right? That's an old business report. Right? But, you know, pulling out our ax to grind about something that hasn't happened over the last 10 years and you know, grinding that out for 20 minutes and turning into an open discussion that doesn't go anywhere, isn't using that time effectively.
Well, I'm going to disagree with you, you know.
I, I don't doubt it. I don't doubt it because you're the one who does that.
Well, you're absolutely right because it's, it's old business, you know, so you know, so this is the problem I have with some of the people, hold on, with some of the people in council is they want to compartmentalize things and let's push it off and, and do it during a committee meeting. When a lot of times, this is my problem with doing a lot of the work in a committee is you got three people and let's just say two of the people agree and one doesn't, you know, you don't have a consensus because then when you bring it before the full committee, there's three other people that can be in a completely different mindset than the, than the committee, you know, so this semantics are describing when we conduct business, you know, to me, it's, it's what you call the meeting is irrelevant. It's trying to get stuff done that we're not doing. You know, and you want to compartmentalize things into a specific meeting. Well, they're all public meetings where we're supposed to be conducting business, you know, and this is, you're entitled to your opinion about the way it should be conducted. Meetings should be conducted and, you know, I don't know how we go about the, you know, deciding how we're going to move forward here, but I'm you know, I guess that's your, again, your opinion of how a meeting should be conducted. If I, I got, I believe that in the 10 minutes that a council person has to be able to discuss any topic, I mean, that's the way, that's the way.
I'll let you know, I start that timer every time. But then the problem is everybody jumps in, everybody jumps in and that, that fouls up the 10 minutes. So I guess I would ask that if we're going to stick to that and that's going to be the way, I'd ask my fellow council people not to engage in banter so that we can actually hold someone to their 10 minutes.
And I would just say, and this is sort of, I don't know, clarifying or seeing how I see the points that Brian's making is, so we, we do have committees, we, we parcel it out. We say, hey, you guys take care of this. You guys take care of that. You guys take care of that. When it gets to the Monday night actual me, I call it the actual meeting, the council meeting, because it's not a, you know, I differentiate between a council meeting and a committee meeting. Where we do have people there who are getting paid by the hour, that should be for, okay, this was, this was solved, this was done, this was done. Let's get this business. It is not the time to debate now, wait, what do we want to do next with this project? That isn't the committees. As Tiffany was pointing out, a lot of people show up to a lot of committee meetings. If I'm not at a committee meeting, it's because I don't think there's anything that's going to be discussed there that I have a particularly strong feeling of or that I want to get involved with that discussion or argument. If I want to, I can show up. It's in the committee meetings where the debate, where the argument, where, well, I think we should only use our widgets if they are quality widgets and have been properly dried. No, I think we can use any widget, no matter what. If, if we want to have that debate, it's not for the Monday night session. That's exactly what either a committee meeting or a work session is for. When we get to the Monday night session, we should have When we get to the Monday night session, we should have a roughly finished product to, to give, not a debate to start.
Got something done in a, in a work session, then that would be great. And then you wouldn't, I wouldn't feel the need to have to bring stuff up in the middle of a council meeting. You know, but nothing ever, I've been talking about the darn permitting. I don't know how, you know, what kind of a meeting do I gotta have to get anywhere with that? I asked ever, you know, I've asked you guys to look last, the last meeting to take a look at this stuff and see what I'm trying to explain to you about. There's nothing in our code that says you need to get a permit for a deck or patio. And with all the BS that we've been dished out, all it would take for us to move forward is for, for the rest of the council to take a look at the things that I asked you to take a look at. You know, and if you don't, so is anybody, let me ask, did anybody take a look at the, at the ordinance, I think it was 16, 2017 that was supposed to talk about where we're, where it says we need to get a permit for a deck and a patio. Did any of you guys take a look at that?
Can we back up? Because that's, uh, Tony, it's, it's an outstanding old business topic, but, but, but we were talking about we're just talking about meeting management. We could come back to that. It's a work session. Now I asked if anybody had any other topics and you didn't say anything, but so right now we're doing meeting management and, and your topic is out there. It's always been out there. We could talk about it some more, but
goes hand in hand with meeting management, Diane.
And I'm interrupting and I'm interrupting you because you're off topic. I just want to stay on topic.
It is on topic. It's talking about meeting management. I'm talking about what happened in the meeting. And what, and what the, and what, what
We're talking about how we should manage. We're talking about how we should, if there's any, what you're saying is that, I think what you're saying is that you're happy with whether it turns into a free for all or whether it goes long. Whatever happens is okay with you. And that's, that's your vote on this.
I would, yeah, I guess that's okay. That's not exactly what, whatever happens is okay with me, but I would be a little bit more uh, inclined to listen to what someone has to say about a topic. Instead of just now, like right now, it's like, oh, you're off topic, Tony. But really it is kind of on topic because we're talking about meetings and what happens in the meeting. But here you are telling me, oh no, Tony, you're off topic. Let's get back on to it.
Yeah. What you're saying is one thing you don't like about meetings, I think. Okay. One of the things you don't like about meetings is that is that something is brought up and then it's dropped. Is that, is that more like?
No, mate, that, that's a good way. I bring things up repeatedly and then no one, there's no uh, action on my colleagues to look at what I asked them to look at. You know, so that's why I end up feeling like I have to bring it up in old business or new business. Or in the middle, like I'm doing it in the middle of, you know, talking about meetings.
Tony, would you email me, will you email me the link please to which you're looking at? I, I will, I will look at it tonight.
So the thing is, is we're all, you know, I mean, as far as I, I can tell you all, I can lecture you all, and Brian has his hand up, but I can lecture you all, I, I can say, I want you all to go look up uh, zebras and make sure you do it before the next
Look up stuff that is important to the village.
Yeah, but
It was an analogy, Tony.
I'm sorry.
And so, so what I'm saying is that honestly, we are not, you know, we can try to boss each other around, but we all are individual council members with each one of us with one vote and we don't report to anybody. So that's, that's the reality. So Brian, you're
Tony, you are a living example of the problem that you are addressing. Right? So your problem is that we don't get things done. Right? Well, right now we are having a meeting to discuss how we operate our business, how we operate our meetings. But we don't seem to be able to talk about that because now you've brought up some piece of old business that isn't about the thing that we're working on. Right? And now you've sidetracked us. So we can't get done the thing that we're trying to do. So when we're in a meeting trying to do something and you bring up something that we can't, that we can't or won't solve in that meeting, all you're doing is derailing the task at hand.
Real, that you don't see the, the correlation.
Oh, I, I absolutely see your correlation. I absolutely see your correlation that this is a thing that never gets done. Right? However, I would imply back to you that you have in fact raised this several times. I know I have looked at the legislation you've, you've brought up and I have no concern, which is why I don't bring it up anymore. Right? It's also been put back to you to say, if you have a problem, come back with specific details of what you'd like changed, even draft legislation, and we can talk about the changes you'd like to make, but you haven't done that either. Now, I would love it if we could get back to the business at hand, which is to discuss how we intend to run our meetings.
Okay, let's, sorry, sorry to derail the conversation.
The, the one thing that you didn't mention, Brian, is did you have any, any, um, thing to add to new business? What new business is or?
You know, yeah. So again, in my opinion, right? New business would be a topic item. Uh, that needs to be addressed, but I would expect in a business meeting that that would be, hey, guys, I saw this thing or had this idea. You know, it needs to be fleshed out, looked into, a resolution needs to be brought to. But I would never expect that to happen in that meeting, right? That idea should be looked at. And what I would call triage, we'd say, okay, this is, you're talking about a tree hanging over the street. Well, that sounds like a streets problem. So we're gonna put that in Streets Cubby and say Streets, please, please look at that. Or it's a, you know, another neighbor said that their storm sewer is always backed up after even just 15 minutes of rain. Well, okay, that's streets again, but that's another bad example. Or, uh, you know, whatever the issue may be in the business meeting, I think it's the wrong time to start solution. Right? That's the time to say whose ball is it? Who should run with it? And then that goes to the committee or to an individual at the next work session, they can bring a report. Right? We can discuss it openly in a committee meeting and then at the committee meeting or work session. And then with that information, we bring the results to the business meeting.
Yeah, it, it sounds like, again, I'll just say what I hear Brian saying is those Monday night meetings should be for more, more for finished products than, you know, we had the, the reading of the inclusivity thing tonight. Well, that was because we spent half an hour talking about it on whatever day legislative, well, I can't remember. Um, similar with the sidewalks. Um, we have never really debated sidewalks in a Monday night meeting because we've been debating it either in legislative and it came out of planning and zoning. And we've done that work in non-Mondays night business meetings. Um, we've done that in the committees. We've done that in the work session. I've been very pleased with how that's worked out. On, on both of those two pieces of kind of big legislation that had a lot of opinions and ideas. And I feel like we have, I know we're still waiting for the final revisions on sidewalks to come through, but I feel that is the model of how it should work and that it's worked very well.
I would agree with Brian's, you know, synopsis or description of how the meeting should go. And, you know, if, I'm sure I, I don't remember what I did at the last meeting that got us off. I'm, I'm sure it was me and Joe that were the ones who were off topic. You know, I don't remember what it was that, how I went on. But could you elaborate on that, Brian? Where did I, where did I go off topic?
I don't remember specifically, but I remember it frustrated the bejesus out of me. But, you know, it was, it was, it was time not well spent. I'll, I, I would put it that way. And if I, if I need to go back to, go back and listen to the meeting to give you, uh, the specific example, I guess I can, but.
Uh, you know, I appreciate what you're, you know, the points you're trying to make, and I do, believe it or not, agree with you. It's just that, uh, I, I don't feel that, uh, that the rest of council was, is, you know, I'm not, I'm not bossing. I'm not telling, I'm not asking you to, to go look up zebras or anything that isn't, has anything to, not to do with the running of the village. It really has to do with understanding the codes and I don't think anybody here is put forth enough for, to understand where, what my issues are. You know, it's pretty black and white. Let's finish talking about
Yeah, hold on. Yeah. Well, yeah. A, we should do that. Let's, uh, that's even better. Thank you for identifying that you had once again slipped off the topic. And allowed us to bring it back.
And almost dragged Brian off with you as he was about to respond.
Yeah.
So, uh, does anybody else have any comments on, on new business, old business, committee reports, uh, other so far, so far, because I want to go back and ask Tiffany again about council meetings in terms of your impression about how long a council meeting should be, because I know I've heard one hour and I, I think I've heard two hours, but I
So one hour. I mean, I feel, unless you have Mike Flickinger there.
So you would like council meetings to be, uh,
Now, and again, I don't Here's, here's the easiest way to say it. I have absolute, you, you can't put a time on it when you do have a full report from every single person. Um, if Tony doesn't have a report and Brian doesn't have a report and finance doesn't really have a report, it's going to go much quicker. If every single person is, has an actual report, including chief, chief, um, Leah and Kim, it's going to go over an hour. I mean, you can't expect 20 people, two minutes each. So i- in a dream world, yeah, an hour. Um, but I do, two hours is absolutely ridiculous. I mean, I think between an hour, hour and a half for the first Monday night meeting, 30 minutes or less for the second one. You're, the second meeting, in my opinion, is for reading legislation, old business, new business. It is not for going back through and debating all of legislation. I think if you have a couple of questions or something like that, that's going to be the extent of it. Um, other than that, it needs, if there's that many questions on it, it, we shouldn't be passing it. It shouldn't be the third reading. It should go right back to legislation. So, um, I mean, that second meeting, I would, again, 30 minutes is really about as long as it should be. We have had plenty of them in less than 15. So that second meeting, 30 minutes, but I would say the first meeting, an hour, hour and a half, if everybody has, has a committee report.
All right. Anyone have a, a concern about that? Hour, hour to an hour and a half for council meetings? For first council meeting of the month, 30 minutes for the second council meeting of the month. Any discomfort with that?
I, I'm, I'm comfortable with that, but I, I'd like to just go back and re, reassert that my concern isn't how long it takes, but rather how we use the minutes in between the beginning and the end. Right? So, so again, when we get to a committee report and instead of getting a committee report, we get something entirely different. I feel like that's 20 minutes of my life I can't get back and that wasn't well spent. Right? When we get to old business, new business, and once again, we are hashing out things that should be elsewhere, right? Should be hashed out elsewhere. I, I feel that is not time well spent. Right? Because, and that, that's, that's my assessment of it. Because so it can go two hours. If every minute of those two hours is well spent, it can go three hours, God forbid. If every one of those minutes is well spent, I wouldn't, wouldn't have a complaint in the world. But when it's not well spent, you know, one minute not well spent is a problem.
Well, I would just say to anybody that if I'm getting off track, say I, I, when I feel someone's off topic, I don't hesitate to say anything and I would I'll treat, you know, I, I don't realize I'm doing it. I guess is the best way to do it. And as soon as I say, you know, get off topic, please say something.
So Tony, whenever I do that, I usually say, hey, Tony, that sounds like something that would be better done in X committee or Y committee. And you say, oh, there you are again, telling me it's got to go to the committee. And you've done that to me several times this year.
Well, I, you're right, you're
So, so that, that was my polite way of saying you were off topic. Should I be less polite?
No, that, that's good. Okay. But I'm not, just because you think I'm, you know, saying something that should be in committee, doesn't mean I'm necessarily going to agree with you. I did not.
Well, I, I think if we also say it could be a work session and I think if we can get, you know, the thing is, is I hand out that, I don't know if it's helpful really, if people look at it, but I hand out the work session notes. And the P and Z is always on there and the notes about, it's always on there. And so it's meant to be, you know, if you've got more to say or you need more time or you want to discuss it with everybody, you know, it'll be on the work session notes. So let's use that and manage to that. And if we, I could put other things on there to make sure that we allocate time for, uh, other items. So, um, I just, we, and I also think that the work session notes, I try to put dates by, by how long we've been postponing, talking about something or how we're not making any progress. So you clearly see if, if we're having an issue with just the very topic itself, itself and getting anywhere on it. So, um, okay. Yeah.
I said the work session notes are great and I, you know, I appreciate that being there to, to make sure it is still in the radar, but you know, just because it's on the, the notes doesn't mean we're getting anywhere. We still haven't gotten anywhere.
Well, I think, I think we got somewhere last time. I do, I really do think we got somewhere more clarity and then, uh, anyway, so, uh, we'll keep on that. I think what we can do, if everybody's in agreement is we can start, when we start the council meeting, because it takes a while to get into a new habit. Right? And, uh, so we can say, before we get to committee reporting between, uh, Mayor Tiffany or myself, somebody can say, okay, now remember, council members, we are trying to work on our committee report, making it succinct and remember the rules. And then hopefully that, that'll jog everybody to, oh yeah, I need to, I agreed to do this.
Right. The only thing I'm going to point out is then you guys, we shouldn't be asking, do you have any questions for this person? Because that's what starts it. So, and Tony, you're already laughing, but it's, I, I think that's the main thing and tell me I'm wrong. So I give my committee report and, you know, there's, I tell you, you know, we have this, this, this and this, and then you say, is there any questions? And then you start asking me questions and then that leads to another question and then that leads to another question. So that's the way I see it. Maybe I'm totally wrong and maybe it doesn't always happen that way. But I feel like, again, you're opening yourself up for a discussion.
I, I would agree with that, Tiffany. Um, I think we just need to also train ourselves and be ready that if I'm giving a legislative report and someone says, but what about legislation uh, to help thin out the deer herd? And I say, that wasn't, we just need to be able to say, we haven't discussed that yet. Please, uh, email me, since I'm chair of this, I'll make sure it's on the agenda for the next meeting and we can discuss it there. And if it is a question like, hey, where did this come from? And I say, oh, this sidewalks thing, we talked about it, this and that, and this is why we did it. You know, if it's a question of, hey, that work you already did, can you explain to me what you did? I will answer that question. If it's, hey, I have a question of work I want you to do, I'll say, great. Put it on the agenda. I'll see you at the next meeting. I look forward to hearing from you. And that's just the solution to that.
And I think what Mark just pointed out there is that's the difference between a report, right? So I have questions about the information you just gave me. Right? Or I have information for future works for your committee. Right? One is a report and the other is a, a request for service or a request for attention, however you want to put that.
Right? And, and it, and it could end up possibly in old business if it's something that the person feels very
Sure.
And I would just like to also just say, I know, uh, because, you know, we're getting into time and getting into, you know, are we capping things? I of course have prided myself, or at least on the past two legislative meetings of coming in under an hour. Uh, I will officially say that is mostly joking. Uh, I do like to get it under an hour, especially when there's only one or two things to discuss. I think we can do that. I of course would not look into end or stifle debate on any issues. I just wanted to say that out loud because as Tony pointed out, not everyone gets my sense of humor. Right away earlier, like
I can change that. I can start giving you all the legislation that we do. So I could throw all those back in your, and then you'll have plenty more to do. No, I'm just teasing. Um, but no, I, I think that that's going to be one of the things that's going to be difficult for everybody because again, when you start asking chief questions or anything like that, then you start, you know, that's going to be a restraint thing for everybody because again, one question leads to another.
And once again, questions about things that have been done or being presented are great. You know, the, the communications committee, we decided that we're going to use MailChimp to send out email blasts to everyone, blah, blah, blah. And someone going, um, why'd you make that choice? Or what's MailChimp? Oh, MailChimp's a service and blah, blah, and it costs less than all the other and we get X number of free Or what's MailChimp? Oh, MailChimp's a service and blah, blah, and it costs less than all the other and we get X number of free a year and that's why we went there. Oh, okay. Thanks. You know, but not like, hey, has anyone ever heard of MailChimp? Do you, do you think you could use that? And then that like, one is committees or work session has done something and reporting it. The other is, hey, I would like to do this in a work session or committee. Once again, finished products at the, the meetings, not work sessions. That's why we have different meetings. That's just my view on things.
Well, maybe we could segue. I don't know if we're done with the meeting thing, but you talked about-
Well, let me ask, let me ask then, is there anything else on meeting management? I think we've come to some good agreements here. Anyone else on meeting management? Are, are we ready to move on? It is eight 13 PM, just telling you the time. Are we ready to move on then?
We've, we've had no input from either Joe or David, yea or nay. So I'd, I'd, I'd be more comfortable saying that we have agreement if we'd heard from all of us.
Okay. Well, I agree with Brian and I agree with Mayor Tiffany on a couple of points. And that is that oftentimes we end up in a council meeting and there's a vote coming up on something and people aren't knowledgeable on the subject matter. And so they start asking questions and sometimes what, you know, what's done in committee is never really, really specific. If a committee comes to some decision or recommendation, then it seems to me that if the committee somehow communicated that clearly to other members of the council, when we come to a council meeting, there wouldn't be so many questions. Or if, or if a council member is really interested in something, they're not a committee member of, then somehow we could come up with some way to alert the person to attend the committee meeting if it's something they're really interested in. And that would, that seems to me, it would tend to bring up less questions. You know, just before a vote.
I, I think that the, of course, the first work, work session of the month is an important one because that is where, you know, we have an opportunity to talk in depth about legislation that is is going to be voted on for that month. So that's an, if you miss that meeting, that it's important to get, get caught up somehow on that. So you're prepared. But I would agree that more communication is, is always better if, if, you know, people are connecting and reading their emails, but I, I think that is the importance of the first of the month work session, really.
So it sounds, it all sounds pretty good to me. I don't think this will very much change how I, how I present my issues. I like to think I've been halfway, a good steward of time. But I think that it should help out, you know, us manage the meeting topics more efficiently. So I can't complain too much.
All right. Right? And I think, and I think we're all in agreement.
Thank you. Thanks, Brian, for reminding me to, that Joe and David had this. To get everybody to, to have a chance to speak up. All right. So is there another topic for tonight?
Well, and Diane, I saw you had a lot more things on that. Did you want to mention any of the others? I saw you had questions about addressing people and such. I just want to make sure, I don't know who put those on there or not. I'm trying to find where it is.
Yeah. Addressing people as councilman and mayor.
Right.
Yeah. I mean, is that, is that something you wanted to talk about? I, I know I, I'm running the meeting. I try to give everyone their title and I probably succeed maybe 50% of the time. I'm not going to say it, but I try. I don't know if people think that, that's silly and I'm putting on airs or if people think that's how we should do it every day and it shouldn't be, hey Tiffany, an open council. It should be Mayor Hughes. I, I mean, I can go either way. I, but I, I distinctly remember that was on one of your, um,
Right.
Yeah. Yes, there was, there was that one and yeah, should we be more formal?
That's on you guys because I prefer to be called Tiffany. I think it's weird. So that's just my-
It's more for, to me, it is more for the audience. You know, so when you're sitting on the other side and, and there's a, sometimes the familiarity is uncomfortable for people who are watching the meeting and expecting to see a council chamber atmosphere. And I know we're a small village and we've always been more relaxed, but I thought I would bring it up because some people, and some people do go back and forth between councilperson and councilmember or whatever.
Oh, I definitely do.
And some people don't. So I thought I'd throw it out there is it-
I'm not offended by being more-
Me calling you Tony?
Well, yeah. I mean, I, you know, just like you said, we're, we're Minerva Park. We're different. What I'd say.
So I, I kind of liken this to-
We don't call people names.
I, I kind of liken this to the idea in, in the business world, right? Even though, you know, I've, it's been ages since I've worked in a customer facing position. It's always been an expectation to dress in a business manner. Right? And the reason is if you look like business, you act like business. Right? When we are, when we're talking, right? My attitude could change if I'm calling you Joe, Joe or Tony or Mark versus calling you councilperson Curl, councilperson Benedetti and councilperson Brewer. Right? Because I talk to councilperson X, Y or Z probably differently than I speak to Joe or Tony or Mark. And that I think it could be a very good reminder of the, the kind of discourse we should be aiming for.
Yeah.
We're wearing T-shirts right now.
Yeah, right. Well, right. Cause here I am in my home and, and I've never been one for dressing for council meetings either because I'm still a citizen at large and, you know, all that.
I'm totally teasing. I'm totally teasing and I would do whatever everybody feels like. I mean, to me, I'm going to be honest. I, I, when I'm trying to like do my list, I'm lucky to get Tony out. So, you know, I'm trying to figure out who's next and who's this. So I don't do it on purpose and I think a lot of people know me and they know that. But I mean, it was something that if, if that's what people would prefer, I would definitely make a cautious effort to, to, to do it. I'm not making promises that I will do it every time. But I definitely would. I mean, it's something that you guys tell me what you prefer and I would be more than happy to try to make that happen. But I will tell you that yes, I, I, there are many times that I barely get Tony out and that's as good as it gets.
Like, my sense of it is that it's not something to mandate, but something to be aware of. That, you know, familiarity breeds familiarity, whereas, whereas formality breeds formality.
Right.
Yeah. When I, when I've, in my meetings, you know, especially at the start of it, we'll go around, I want, you know, councilperson, I'm doing that. I am doing that expressly to say, we have an agenda. We have a thing. Every councilperson will talk. I will go along. This is not a time for distraction or getting off the subject and that's why I do it. As I said, when I'm not running a meeting and even when I am, I, you know, say, you know, Joe, you'll get your chance. Give me a second. Sorry, blah, blah, blah. And, and slip right out of it. But it doesn't seem like anyone here, from what I'm hearing, has a big deal with, oh, they're not using my title. And it doesn't seem like anyone here is saying, I absolutely refuse titles. It, it, it seems kind of loosey goosey here unless anyone has a dissenting opinion to that.
I use it in formal communication and meetings, but you can call me whatever you want.
Well, I just think-
I'll call you all councilpeople and madam mayor, but call me whatever. I don't care.
I, I just think I could go either. Obviously we've been doing it whichever way, but it just seems like if you're, and if you're a citizen, if you're a resident watching, or if you're a resident who's bringing something to the table, that's important to them. That if we look like we're chummy and, and it's exclusionary to, to the resident, it's not as comfortable for them. I think if they think they're, they're talking to, you know, a more formal group rather than you know, informal group. But that's, and that's all perception and that's all about, it's, it's just something I'm a little more sensitive to in, in, in management meetings, you know, it's the control of the meeting and, and the, the where you sit and how you show up and the way you speak, it's all part of how people perceive you and whether they're going to respect what you're saying and, and all that. So it's all part of that psychology of, of meaning. But I, I'm, I'm not, that's all I-
Yeah. And there is something to be said, yeah, but we're Minerva Park. So we're all on a first name basis anyway, because we all walk our dogs on the same street. Et cetera.
All right.
That was the only thing that I had thought of from there. So I will shut my mouth and let people talk.
All right. So does anybody have anything? I, I know Tony had some stuff that he kind of wanted to talk about. Before we get done with everything, I have a couple, just go over some basics. Tony, do you want to, I know you were trying to talk about something earlier. Do you want to?
I'm going to send out emails.
Yeah. Send me the link. I'm not doing anything tonight. I'm happy to look at it.
Tony, the problem I've had with this, because it, it has been dragging along is, and I'm not, I'm not trying to be anything other than honest here. I, I don't understand what it is or what your point is. I know you're saying we don't have, we don't need a permit for decks and patio. Okay. I don't know. Do you think we should require permits and we need to make it clear? Do you, are, are we requiring permits and we shouldn't be? I don't know what the action is you want to take. I don't know if you're like, it's not in there and Bobby Sue down the road put in a deck and it was a pain in the butt because they needed to get a permit and they shouldn't have had to, and we need to stop that. Or it's not clear. People are building patios and they're saying they don't have to get a permit and they should be getting one and we need to clarify it so we can get those permits. I, I honestly don't know where you're going with that.
Sorry if I haven't done a good job in explaining what my gripe is.
That's okay. And I probably haven't done a good job pointing out my confusion.
Well, and this, my, it's, the problem is, is that when someone calls up and talks to Becky about whether the, you know, whether they need a permit for the deck and the patio, she tells them, yes, you do. My problem is that it doesn't say that. You know, that's what, you know, all of these conversations I'm having about what the code does and doesn't say really, or moot, I think. It's really, what do we want to do? Right now, our code does not say that you need a permit for a driveway, a deck or a patio. Now, the debt, the stuff that, that Gene brought, that he showed us in his memo, that talks about getting a permit for a building permit for a deck and a patio. And sometimes you do need to get a building permit for a deck or a patio. But there's nothing in our code that says that you need a permit for a deck, a patio, a sidewalk, a driveway. You know, and the point I'm trying to make is that Becky tells, has been telling everybody for years that you need permits for these things. And the reality is there's nothing in our code that says you need a permit for these things. So I would, you know, the best, the, the easiest way to move on, and you won't hear me bring this up again, is to have Becky stop telling people they need a permit for a deck, a patio, a sidewalk, a driveway, until we decide we want to pass the legislation to, to do that or not to do that. That's what I'm looking for.
But the thing is, is the, the reason that Becky is telling people is because Hollins and Eric Fisher are telling them, telling her to tell them that. So, so if we, you know,
because this started, no, this started, this all-
Then why, then why is it, why is it that this isn't done already? Mayor Hughes, do you have a comment on this? Because if it's that simple, tell Becky to stop telling her that.
Well, I mean, it boils back down to, do you want to? So I don't think, here's, here's how I'm going to say it. There's a difference between the zoning permit and the building permit. So that's going to be number one. So when they call in and ask Becky, do they need a permit? They are asking, do I need a zoning permit? That's the first thing. And there is a fee on the fee schedule for a zoning permit for a deck, a fence, a patio, whatever I'm trying to say. And that's going to be a matter of, and whether or not it's in our legislation, whether or not it's not. Now, if they need a building permit, that's something totally separate. That goes through Franklin County. We cannot change that. But what Tony is referring to is whether or not we charge for a zoning permit. The only thing Minerva Park does is zone, well, I, I'm probably wrong on that too. And Tony, you can correct me if I'm wrong. But the main thing that we're talking about is whether or not we need a zoning permit because that is what Becky charges the $25 for is for the zoning permit. That Becky takes the application. She enters it all into the system and she gives it to Jason. That's the way it works then. And then if there's a variance or anything like that. So at this point, it's on the fee schedule. She charges the $25 and then we approve it and then we tell them whether or not they have to go to Franklin County. So it's a matter of, do we want to charge a zoning permit? Because that's what we're talking, that's technically what we're talking about. Tony, am I wrong?
Well, I wouldn't tell, there's what's called zoning approval. When you-
Zoning approval. Okay.
Turn in a building permit, you need to get zoning approval before you can turn in your building permit.
Correct.
But then when these types of fee, they're not really zoning fees or just permits. There's like a fence. We've got a code that says you need to get a permit for a fence. We've got a, we've got a fee or a code that says you need to get a permit for a shed. You know, but we don't have a, a code that says you need a permit for a driveway, a side, well, the sidewalk's coming up. But the decks and the patios, sidewalks, driveways, those are all things that they would just be, they wouldn't be called a zoning permit. It's just a permit for like, or swimming pool is another one. You know, there are, you know, and those don't need, it's the building permit that needs zoning approval. And then the other permits are just to, to uphold the zoning codes that relate to the different fence, deck, shed, whatever it is that we want to have people get permits for. And if you look, you know, I'll send out the information about the driveways that, and this is part of the problem why Beck, why Becky hasn't stopped. Because every time I bring it up, you got Eric and Jean saying, oh no, our code does say this. Well, they have yet, and I'm going to send out all the information. They have, the things that they say are, say we need those type of permits, they're not accurate. You know, the one, the one for, for a driveway, the title of the code, it's 1477, use of right of ways. That's what Eric and Jean are saying requires you to get a permit for a driveway. It's not a driveway permit. It's a use of the right of way.
Tony, they, in our last work session, they very clearly stated that that was only about the apron approach. And not about the driveway.
Well, but-
So you are miscategorizing what they've said.
Well, that was the first meeting that they ever differentiated between a driveway and a apron.
That was the first.
We're making, we're making progress. We're making progress teasing out what actually we were trying to accomplish. I thought, and we had three things that were, we're going to follow up on regarding that confusion. And Eric was supposed to volunteer to get some, get some language that would help create the code that would clarify. But I haven't heard anything from Eric. Is Eric around? Is, is he working on something else that, that he can't work on this for us? This and the sidewalk?
He was in there, he was in there for an hour to earlier today. I talked to him for a few minutes. We talked about, what did we talk about? He said he was going to email you about your, your question about facilities.
Right. Right. And it's, okay, so-
Did you ever get that?
No, no.
Okay. He said he was going to email you about that. He said he was going to have it for the next meeting. He comes in on Monday, Wednesday, Friday for about an hour. That's when he comes in and other than that, he's still dealing with MI and doing that kind of stuff. We actually-
So he has three hours a week that he might work on.
No, that's just when he comes in. So he stops at MI, he deals with them. He works from home as well. Going through the emails because needless to say, he gets emails from you guys. He gets emails from planning and zoning. So he goes through all of those as well. So, and then again, follows up with MI and he's still doing things with MI. He's still doing things with the Westerville City Schools. So without doing all of that on a Zoom meeting, Mark had actually asked a couple of questions earlier. But I don't know that this Zoom meeting is really the place that we should be talking about that. And Brian was there as well. So that's a different topic, I think. So that's a different topic, I think. Um, so the. I really had something to say about the um. To, I think one, just to go back, and now we are starting to get a little bit off topic, but. One of the times in which this started, to bring it back for Tony. Um, there was one on Jordan Road that was replacing a driveway, um, except for. I don't believe they were actually doing anything in the right of way, because we, they didn't have, they didn't touch their curb and gutter. Um, and Tony went over and looked at it because we we were trying to figure out that, do you remember that, Tony?
Yeah.
So he came over, he looked at the driveway. Yeah, he came over, looked at the driveway, they did not go into the right of way, they did not touch the curb and gutter, and um, this was. Kelvin was the current code enforcement officer. And somebody had gotten a permit and they never touched it, and that's where this topic started. So just to kind of give you a background, it was, it was a driveway, they did not go into. The right of way and they had to get a permit, and we were told that that's what they needed. So that's where this started, I don't, you know, where we go from here, I'm not sure.
It all started with with Scott Dolinger. He is that the, he's the one that came up with, when do I need to get a permit, if you remember that? When it came out in the village, that was the worst, that that was full of mistakes. And we've been, you know, trying to. Get back to normal ever since, and why Eric and Jean, you know, continue to try to defend that, the. Stuff that Scott started doing is beyond me. Like I said, I'm gonna send out the information, I, that, well, I don't even know. He gets to the point where it's a man, Brian's already made up his mind that it's all fine. And it's, it's extremely frustrating to to uh, to to spend the time that I've spent, you want to talk about, you know, time management, the amount of time I've spent going over our codes. And I bring it up over and over again, the same thing, I talked about swimming pools, I think was what I brought up the last meeting. You know, I don't know if anybody's, you know, and I guess, you know, if I'm sounding like I'm bossing you guys around, I'm sorry. But I'm just trying to get stuff, things, get stuff done, and you know, I bring up, I brought up home occupations, I don't know how many times. There are so many of our code that need.
If I can jump in here, Tony.
Go ahead.
And and I think, I think the biggest problem here is that you bring these things up. But as Mark said, and I'm in agreement. I don't, I don't know what your concern is, because you say you gotta look at this thing, you gotta look at this thing, well, I look at it and all the words make sense, they run together in order and. They're full and complete logical sentences, so you have something you're trying to accomplish one way or the other, and I don't know what it is, so.
Have you looked at home occupations and swimming pools? And you're telling me that you don't see any problem with those two codes? Have you, are you, is that what you're telling me?
Uh, no, I I tell you that I looked at the driveway one. Because that was the one that you were talking about, and it all made sense to me. So, you know, but what was never clear to me was that, you know. Well, people are going and getting permits for things they don't need to get permits for. That was never part of the discussion, it was always, go look at the code, it's all wrong, and they're lying. But everything I heard from Jean and Eric was apron. Because that's what I read.
That was the first, well, that was the first off, that has nothing to do with it, Brian.
And that was the first time I've had that conversation with them.
Okay, how many times have you brought up home occupations?
I have no count, I I in fact don't know that I have ever been in a meeting where you have brought up home occupation.
I think there was one time and I went and looked at it when you brought up home occupation and I didn't understand the whole thing. I I thought it was kind of bizarre, but uh, you know, so what? I'm not, I'm not an expert at writing this stuff, I mean, I don't understand. You know, where, you know, it's one thing for me to look at it, but I, you know, I'm not the one that's. Uh, that is qualified to write this stuff.
Right, so I think what I would ask of you. Tony, I think what I would ask of you, if you want, if you really want to find progress, what I would ask of you, because this is a concern that you have. To make a statement, this is my concern. It is my concern that people are being told to get permits for things that the code doesn't specify they need a permit for. Right, and then you link the related. Piece of ordinance. And then say, you know, this is the question, do we want to? Change this to required, do we want to make it more clear to not require it? And then I'll know what I'm looking at, otherwise, I can look at it all day, and if it's all plain clear English and I don't know what your concern is, I can't fix your problem.
Well, that's, I guess you're you're kind of answering my question for me, is that you can't look at a code and see what the problem is with it.
No, I I look at the code and says it, it 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 works as it is. Right, you're coming at it from a different perspective and a different angle. Right, so when I look at the, when I look at the code that relates to getting a permit for aprons. Right, I say, oh, it says you need a permit for aprons, no problem, it all makes sense and it's all legal, perfect.
Not, but but here's the thing, let me.
But no, but here's the thing, is you had additional context that I didn't have. Because you never explained that. And and I'm not the only one in the meeting who's who's that way, because. Mark has already said that he didn't understand that that was your concern either.
I have a question for Tony, and that is, if you, if it requires a zoning permit in order to get a building permit, you're required to get a building permit to build a deck or a pool. Or an apron. I don't understand the problem either, or or is there something happening whereby things are are being installed that shouldn't be installed, or are? People complaining about things, or or is our civic planning way off, or what, you know, what's the issue? If that makes sense.
Issue is that people are being told they need to get permits that they shouldn't be getting. And I guess, you know, I'm sorry I didn't start off with that statement. You know, when I tell you that, I know I said it over and over again, is that there's nothing in our code that says that you need to get a permit, I don't know how much more.
Yeah, you you are right, you said that over and over again, but you never said the other thing that people are making, being made to get those permits. Even though there's no code that says you have to.
Well, if you can't, I don't understand, if you can't get a building permit and a building permit is required. And you have to have the zoning permit in order to get the building permit. Then. I, you know, I can understand why maybe Eric and Jean are saying what they say, but I. In terms of technicalities, you know.
They're not technicalities, it's the way that when someone calls up and asks Becky, do I need to get a permit? For this, that, and the other thing, it is not being done properly. According to our codes, would Jean, when, the only time you need to get a building permit for a deck or a shit, or a deck or a patio. Is if you're gonna have electricity or plumbing in it. You know, then you need to get a building permit, which requires getting zoning approval first to get the building permit.
Okay, well, now, now, see, the way you just explained that, I understand the issue much better than I did.
Isn't, is, correct me if I'm wrong, because I was talking with someone, I can't remember one, who was saying, don't you also need permits for decks, uh, depending on their height? Like those twenty foot tall decks we have coming off the back of the MI homes, I assume we get a building permit for that, because that seems like a. Pretty big safety hazard if not.
No, I mean, I don't believe that there's any, well, you know, there is, now that I think about it, there is a certain height. That requires a building permit, I don't know what that is, but there is.
I think it's actually pretty low, I think that's like thirty six inches.
So, yeah.
Is that a variance that you're talking about then, if you want to build a deck higher than what the general guideline say?
Build one, you can build one lower than that without getting a building permit.
Right.
I think as I understand it, it's things that can collapse and kill people, you need things for things that are a foot off the ground, if they collapse, aren't gonna kill somebody.
Or if someone falls off, right, because then then the part of the building code is, it doesn't have a proper railing, does the railing have proper styles? Is the railing of a proper height so that people don't topple off? That kind of stuff.
Pretty sure there's also a size, if it's over two hundred or two hundred fifty square feet.
Square feet, uh.
I would also think, there's a how. If and how it attaches to the the home structure is probably part of it too.
That's another issue too, is that if if it's attached, it it needs to get a building permit.
Right.
You know.
So.
So it seems to me the village has been saying, if you're gonna get a building permit from Franklin County. That means you need a zoning permit from Minerva Park, and we've just not been distinguishing. Between decks that require it and decks that don't, and we've just said, hey. Most people or a more than half are gonna need a Franklin County, well, let's just make sure everyone gets the zoning permit so they are getting what they want. And I'm not saying that's a solution to any problem, I'm saying that might be the cause of the problem, as we just said. Since some or most decks are going to need a Franklin County permit anyway. Have people go through, get a zoning permit, because if they need one, that's a step they need to take. Once again, that's not a solution, that just might be an explanation of why we are where we are.
No, it's as good as, as good of explanation as any is.
Well. Are there people using technicalities such as they build a deck without electricity or these other items that you specified? And they're bootlegging construction, is that kind of what we're talking about, or they might?
I'm, I don't know any, you know, what, I haven't looked at anybody's deck or seen what they're doing, the only thing I know is that. You don't automatically have to get a permit for a deck or a patio, there are times that you do. But we tell them every time, you gotta get one, and then I doubt that we go and and tell them that you need to also go get a building permit for it. You know, I don't even know if we go to that, you know, if we look at the brand and say, you know, I don't know, the answer.
I'm, I'm curious, how many decks are fewer than thirty six inches off the ground? And I'm curious, how many decks aren't attached to the home structure? Because those are two really common things for a deck, so I. My, and I'm just making stuff up right now, just so you know.
I don't know.
My my sense of it is that probably ninety plus percent of decks built would require. This, a building permit, which also then would require a zoning permit. Which is probably, again, back to Mark's point, why the general rule of thumb was just, yeah, sure you need it, because. Who's, who's building a? Two foot deck.
I don't know that they're being told that once you get the zoning permit, you need to go and get.
That's, that's yet another problem, right, that's not a problem with our code then, that's a problem with policies and procedures. In the administrative office, which can also be looked at, but that's, you know, like when you, when you. Yeah, it's a separate issue, right, so that's another concern I have, when you raise these problems, right, we've. We 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 have to parse things out to one issue at a time, right, so when looking at driveways and aprons, which you've noticed, we already. Flew off that to something else, right, you know, we have to, we have to look, the code, the code is appropriate for aprons and approaches. Right, so then we have to look, is the code appropriate for the rest of the driveway? Right, those, that's the next problem, and are we communicating the right things for the rest of the driveway? So once we figure out that, hold on, once we figure out that, then we can move on to, or you know, run in parallel. Decks are, do, is our code correct for decks? Right, then we can move on to, does our administrative office have what they need to appropriately communicate that? Right, those are like four different little problems, but because we try to pull one cord. To fix all of them, it it it, the weight's too heavy, right, you have to move the problems to one cord per problem and pull one cord.
You're right, well, I absolutely understand what you're saying here, and I'm sorry that it's taken me so long to to demonstrate, there's many different cords we need to start pulling here.
Well, but 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 don't, but you keep on presenting them as one cord.
I'm sorry, you know what, it's, the cord is that the, what people are being told about what they need permits for is incorrect. That's the big cord.
And that weight's too heavy, right, so we just demonstrated that that weight is too heavy, and so we have to break it down into problems that we can tackle.
That's great, let's find out, let's try to figure out all the cords we need to start pulling, you know, because I've been bringing it up, I talked about home occupations, swimming pools, decks.
Okay, again, what about them? I, all you're saying is words, I can say car, tire, bush, tree.
Okay, we need to address temporary pools, okay?
Okay.
If you, if, this is why I keep saying, look at the code, and maybe you'll understand what I'm trying to, the point I'm trying to make, is if you read the code, you would understand.
Again, I I've read the code and didn't find the problem, because you have a perspective. Because you have a perspective that I, I I've read, what I, you know, all the codes, and whenever you send a link, I read it.
You've read the swimming pool code.
I read the swimming pool code, and I didn't find a particular problem.
Oh, my God.
So so you have a perspective that I don't, so you need to explain what your problem is so that I can help you address it. I'll be glad to help you address it, but if I don't understand your problem.
Okay, first off, we need to identify, or we need to talk about temporary pools. Uh, as opposed to, I guess, in-ground pools, and the, and the types of, because if you have a temporary pool, our code says that. You have to have a filtration system, you have to have a fence around it. And it also says that you need to present your uh, application, or the the building inspector will inspect the pool. That is whole, that's a whole coordinate.
I believe that there is a size on that temporary pool, right, it's not any temporary pool.
No, it's any, a pool is defined as any. Body or anything holding two feet or more of water. See, that's what I'm also.
Yes.
That's, that would be a temporary pool.
That would be a temporary pool, that's, that's bigger than.
Sided pool that you put up and take down, if you look at all the little kiddie pools, the inflatable pools. That you can't find anywhere, because everyone went out and bottomed, those are all under two feet deep.
They're not all under two feet deep, there's a lot of pools that are, I seen one up last year that's over two.
No, so so anything over two feet.
And it's that stuff, that makes sense.
Absolutely, yeah.
If it's, if it's twelve feet across and has the the PVC frame and the big thing, and people, it can reasonably said that. A small child, if they were in the middle of it, feet couldn't have touched the ground, then.
Well, that's if, that's all.
That's where you need to.
Okay, so, okay, so so Tony, so you you have said, and without going to the code, I'm gonna believe you. That a pool is defined as anything holding more than two feet of water. Right, what's your problem with that?
I have no problem with that, it's.
Okay, then why are we talking about it?
Because there are pools that are bigger than two feet, that have been put up, and I. If they're to have the same requirements as the other pools, that means that if someone has one of these pools, they have to put fences up, they have to have filtration systems in it. You know, and these are all things that I think should be addressed.
So if you, okay, so.
If you see those, you should bring it to the attention.
There are, the issue with going to the building inspector is that the building inspector, let me finish, the building inspector is Franklin County. Franklin County does not inspect swimming pools. There is nothing in the building code, well, let me finish there, Brian, because I'm, wow, you're, I'm sorry if this is taking up your snack time there, but I'm. About.
You gotta get to it here.
The. Franklin County has never been notified that they are doing our building, our swimming pool permits. You know, they need to be given our pool code so that they can enforce that.
Okay. So so now, now, now that your problem is clear, right, that there are pools that do not follow our code. Right, and it's our zoning, our zoning ordinances are that 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 are clear on what is a pool and what is required. Right, then it is not a code issue, but it's a code enforcement issue and a communication with the county. Uh, that we have to communicate those those plans, so as council, that's, that's not really ours to adjust, right, we need. Administration to get the code enforcement officer to enforce the code, and we need the administration to communicate those codes to Franklin County.
That's one way to go about it, we don't have to have Franklin County do our building, our pool inspections, we could have our code enforcement do it, but that would require. Taking a look at the legislation and rewriting the legislation or the ordinance about swimming pools, that's what we need to do.
So is it, is it just the enforcement piece that needs adjusted?
I think we need to, we need to talk about temporary pools, whether they need to have the filtration system and fencing and lighting and. Whatever other requirements there are.
And I'll, I'll say yes.
Yeah, I think the point is, yeah, I think the point is, is that. Since this code was originally written, it it used to be, it was a. A a clear designation between something simple like a two foot or less and something big. And now, things have changed and you can have a two and a half, three foot, or. Or you can have these different heights that maybe don't need filtration, but they're not addressed, so. If you go above two feet, two feet, one inch, you jump to the. You need everything, the fencing and the filtration, so there's nothing for that in-between group of pools that have. Weren't in existence, weren't being manufactured at the time that the the this, so it seems like if we just got someone else's code, like Westerville's or somebody's. That's probably our up-to-date and is addressed that, we carve it out and slap it on ours and. That's probably our up to date and is addressed that we carve it out and slap it on ours and.
Right. And that's why I say the legislative.
Well, let's do it.
Well, so, so it is, it is a zoning code. Should that be, should that be a request that we make to our planning and zoning committee?
Here we go on another topic.
To, to make that because again, it is, we have that committee commission for those purposes. We, you know, while we have the, the right and the ability to adjust whatever they send to us. Right? These kinds of changes. Should come from them.
That's, you know, we're going on to another topic because that's a whole nother, you know, a topic about what has to go before planning and zoning. And what can just be taken up by council, you know, but here we are compartmentalizing things again, saying, oh, let's push that off the planning and zoning.
Well, welcome to representative democracy. Right? There's, welcome to representative democracy. This is, this is how a representative democracy works. There are parts of a representative democracy that does certain things and that's just the nature of the beast.
I, I, I agree, but, but your opinion about where, you know, who should be taking this up.
I actually.
It's on to another topic that we need.
I didn't.
Is about.
I didn't.
One of my second, Brian.
Okay, go ahead.
It's that planning and zone, that zoning codes do not have to go to planning and zoning first. There's, that's another one of those misconceptions that have been perpetrated for years. Is that there's nothing, find something in the code that says that planning and zoning has to initiate all changes to zoning codes.
They would step up and do it.
You, I think you're putting words in my mouth because I didn't say that it had to. I said that that it's my opinion that it should. Right? And I asked a question, should this go to planning and zoning? Right? You, you see how that is sizably different than what you just characterized my statement to?
Well, you've said it before, Brian.
And that I, that it is my opinion that these things should. But again, I am one of six. We are a body that, that has to act in concert. So if four other, if three other people agree with you, then.
It becomes doctrine, you know, because I don't hear anybody else saying anything.
Well, I, I, I just, I, I, it's eight fifty five, just saying it's eight fifty five. And, um, and, uh, we might want to sit on this one, but I wanted to just ask, uh, Tiffany. Does our current code enforcement guy, since he used to be in business for himself, does he have access to? Codes like swimming pool. Codes that, that he could, uh, give us to look at that he's worked with before. And then he's found helpful in terms of code enforcement?
Yes. Um, I've actually had a conversation with him about. Right now, we pretty much have Eric doing it and this goes back to a different topic, but. Right now, we pretty much have Eric is the one that's going and doing all of that. I would prefer to bring Jason in to do that kind of stuff. Anything that has to do with, um, codes, I prefer that we start utilizing Jason for that kind of stuff. So to answer your question, yes, I mean, he has Google, just like Eric does. That's pretty much what Eric does, in my opinion. Eric goes to Westerville, he goes to Worthington, he pulls the information. Um, in which, uh, legislate, you know, our committees could be doing, anybody could be doing. It's just a matter of. Pulling the information and then deciding what you want to do with it. You're going to pull this piece from here, this piece from here. So. Um, yes, and Jason's aware that I know that, you know, him and I have had that conversation that I really want him to start getting involved in. In that kind of stuff. So easy answer, yes, Jason is able to do that. He has no issues doing that. He has access to anything that, you know, Eric would have had. Now that I finally get to get two words in edgewise, um, permits. FYI, um, anytime somebody does come in and gets the zoning permit for a fence or not for, whatever, for. A deck, if they do have to go to Franklin County, they are advised that they have to go to Franklin County. We actually have a cute little form, um, that is a zoning certificate is I think what it's actually called. Um, and there's a little box that you check that they have to go to Franklin County to get the building permit. So FYI. We do have that. It is done. It is correct. That was all I had to say about that because I wanted to make sure that we did establish that we, they are told that they have to go. So that was like 10 minutes ago, but done. So Diane, yes, and Tony and Brian, yes, the permit is done. And yes, Jason can definitely get involved in that.
There you go.
All right. Can we, um. Can we, uh, call it a night?
No, I have two things, but mine are both quick as long as you don't ask a question.
Liar.
No, they are. Just don't ask any questions. Flow line, only because I forgot to say this at the end of the actual council meeting. Flow lines, um, planning on being out next Monday and Tuesday, weather permitting to do Yasmin Market. Everybody was asking. So Monday and Tuesday. Yes. Um, so don't ask any questions. We'll move on. The transfer request, sorry, I have a dog going crazy. The transfer. Request, um, that was supposed to take 10 days. They came back with three additional questions. So the clock starts all over again. We are working to get them the information that they have requested. If anybody wants to see the information that they requested, basically it was information, where does the money come from? What's the? ORC number for this and that and everything else. So Jean and Kim and everybody's involved in it, trying to get the information. So we have three questions that we will be submitting, um, to, uh, try to get that, you know, to continue on the transfer request. So.
That's transfer of sewer monies, right?
Correct. From the waterline fund to the storm sewer fund. Yes. And that's it. That really is all I have.
Okay.
All right. Then move to adjourn.
Second.
All right. Everybody have a wonderful evening.
Bye.
Bye.